And if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First on our item is report of the chairman, and I'm going to turn this over to our superintendent so he can discuss the donation that we received from the Weller Foundation.
On page four of our packets, I'd like to just bring to everyone's attention, we got a letter the other day from the Weller Foundation. The Weller Foundation is located in Woodbury. They support many teacher projects and have done so in Monroe for many, many years, and this was a bit of a surprise that, you know, after they reviewed their current budget, the Board of Trustees approved $1,250 donation to our high school library, and it's to provide assistance to your high school in the purchase of educational materials, et cetera. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I am pleased to enclose a check, number 44431, made payable to Massey High School Media Center in the amount of $1,250, and you can see the rest there. Joe, if you would come up, please, and just make a comment about how that money is going to be spent, that would be great.
As it looks right here so far, it's already being spent as we talk. So, like I said, we got $1,250. This is about three-quarters of it is already spent. Megan Letgo and Kathy Sharm went out and purchased about $900 worth of books. This is really nice. It's a really good opportunity for us and for them. A lot of our English Language Arts classes encourage outside reads, and it's woven into the curriculum, so a lot of this money is being used to purchase fiction for outside reads, which is very helpful for us. They did ask for any of the books that we get from them, you'll see on the inside, there's a nice little donated by the Weller Foundation Incorporated in memory of Barton L. Weller. So we had those on all the books, but it's a really nice little feature for all of us. We were also able to purchase these books through Linda Storytime, so it's nice. She gives us a nice 20% discount. We're able to support local business in town and, you know, supplement our resources and help out with our English Language Arts staff.
So we have a thank you letter in the making, and they're going to...
Meg's doing a thank you letter.
...a list of titles that would be sent to them. I think, Joe, I think a picture of the cart with all the books and maybe one open to show that the thing is in there, the dedication part.
That'd be great.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, this is about, like I said, this is about three-quarters of the money spent so far.
Great.
Great, that's wonderful.
Here comes a picture now.
Yes. Oh, please, picture.
Yeah, please.
Do you want me to stand?
Yes, please stand.
We need a human feature in there, Joe.
Thank you.
Facebook is making everybody famous.
I figured you'd get a chance to say $900 worth of books looks like right now.
Great, thank you so much. That's wonderful donation by the Weller Foundation. We will move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So...
Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you. Did you want to talk about the one retirement in there?
Yep, this was a late retirement. Serena Stanley from the middle school submitted her letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement. You can see that on page 10 in your packet. Serena is a longtime employee of the district, and we wish her very well.
Great. Do I have any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to item five, reports of the committee and liaisons, and our Massey board reps are not here. I'm assuming they are studying for their midterms.
Is that right, Joe?
They are actually studying. I don't have time for that.
Okay, so we will move past them. Does anybody else have any committee reports for this evening? Wow, okay, moving right along. Item six, public participation, if anybody would like to come and speak up here. Nobody. We will move past that. Item seven, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
I've added several items that I would like to report on that have come up relatively recently, so I'll do that after we get the fund balance and fund activities from Gabby. Gabby?
So, we're still running pretty well on insurance. We have one person who's reached stop loss, four people over $50,000, and that's comparable to where we were last year. Actually, a little bit better on the stop loss side, and, you know, again, a little bit better, about $200,000 better on the actual claim side. It's gotten cold outside. We're burning oil here at Massey. We switched over to oil for the winter months. It was a little bit cheaper, you know, so we thought last year, so we're doing that. And food services, I don't know if you recall, I had said that the state was asking if we had wanted to potentially include any investment in new equipment in our proposed RFPs that we actually needed vendors to walk through. So we had vendors walk through two weeks ago, or actually about a week and a half ago, on Friday, January 8th, and their proposals were due to us last Friday. Well, we had one food service management company submit proposed equipment upgrades to us out of the three that walked through, which is a little disappointing, but not really unexpected. I think everybody's, both on the food service management company and on the business office sides across the state where the state is requiring this, is sort of struggling with these requirements. And they're not really state requirements, they're actually USDA requirements. And also, the state has not put out the new RFP for food services, which is really starting to get worrisome because to meet the state and the federal sort of potential timelines, they would be due back to the state, and we could publish them on February 9th. No one's really quite sure how the state is going to review 49 proposed RFPs in now less than about three weeks, so we're really not sure what's going on anymore with the state.
And we were in this exact same spot a year ago at this time. You know, we're going to run out of time to do the process if we don't get the RFP from the state quickly, because once we get the RFP, we have to put the RFP out for the vendors. They have a period of turnaround time. Then we have to score the RFPs as they come in, or when we open the packets, and then you have to bring them online in time for July 1st.
July 1st, technically.
So, we're getting to that point again where we're going to press up against the deadlines, and the state is just not being very helpful in this regard.
No. The organization that the business managers have, it's called CASBO, Connecticut Association of School Business Officers, and the organization that Jim belongs to, CAPSIS, have written joint letters to our congressional delegation to let them know. They've also spoken to the governor's office, and the governor's office hasn't really been very receptive. They've kind of been like, "We don't understand, what's the big deal?" I'm not really surprised, but I'm, you know, disappointed. We're still kind of in this wait-and-see mode, and, you know, I send an email every couple days, "Hi, when's it coming out?" "Oh, it'll be out the end of the week." And I'm like, mm, no. So the end of last week sort of kind of passed already, and we're into this week, and we have no idea what's happening. So it's frustrating. So we're not doing anything wrong. We're in the same boat as 49 or 48 other districts, and we're all kind of like, mm.
And those are just the ones that have to rebid?
Those are the ones that have to rebid.
But then there's other ones too, right?
I think there's either somewhere between 10 and 15 that have contracts that were expiring anyway that needed to do this. So the state's kind of, I mean, the USDA has really put the state under the gun, and I don't even know, I can't even say who's at fault here. I think it's just misinterpretation because there's also been several sets of attorneys at relatively high levels who reviewed the USDA's procurement policies and said, "No, this is, what Connecticut asked us to do was fine." So if the lawyers can't agree, I don't know.
And now, so now, isn't the guidelines, so the guidelines the USDA put out, wasn't it that you had to have multiple bids? They wanted more than one, they wanted multiple. So what happens now in that case where we only had one person come back with a bid?
Well, that's, that was just, you know, a request for information. I don't know, I'm going to look at it, I mean, I don't know.
There's only so many players.
And that's the other problem.
Right, and that's where I was kind of going towards. You know, we probably will only get one bid, so how does that fall into the federal government's mandate?
Well, it's interesting you ask that, because I was at a meeting, this is back in September, and the woman who was the lead on it was from the USDA. She kept talking about multiple bidders, multiple bidders, and we all looked at each other, we're like, "She's crazy, because she has no idea what she's talking about here." So I raised my hand, and I said, "You know, we had three people come to our walk-through, we had two bidders. We did what you guys asked us to do. We published it. We published it on the DAS website, which is not actually what the state asked, but it's over and above." So I'm like, "It's been out there." And she goes, "Well, did you think of putting it in any national publications?" And I started looking at it, and I'm like, "What national publications would you recommend?" I'm like, "The New York Times, the what?" I'm like, "I don't know what a national publication is that would be appropriate," because I have no idea. She's like, "Oh, well, you could call us and we'd help you." And I said, "Okay, that's fine." I said, "But let's say a company from, you know, Iowa bids. How would I know that a company from Iowa has a clue what to do in Connecticut? I understand that the rules are the same, but do I really want to take a chance on a vendor who's never done any business in Connecticut? I don't really think I want my district of 3,200 kids to be the guinea pigs." I'm like, "I don't want to be the guinea pig." And she's like, "Well, it wouldn't necessarily be like that, but you really have to make sure you get a wide variety." And I was just like, "Yeah, okay, you have no idea what you're talking about." But it's just, I'm not going to be the guinea pig for somebody from, and it's not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to food service management companies, but the ones that we do have that operate in Connecticut, whether it's Sodexo, Chartwells, and Whitsons, those are the three major players, they're, Sodexo is a huge international conglomerate. I mean, they don't just do food in Connecticut, and they're based out of France, I believe. I think they kind of know what they're doing. They have an international presence. You know, Whitsons is also large. They're a huge presence in Massachusetts. They do have, you know, they do have stretching to Connecticut. Chartwells is also pretty big, they're national. So we have national companies bidding, it's just that we don't have ones that are based in Iowa. I mean, I don't know.
And why doesn't Aramark bid, for instance?
Right.
You know, here's a, you know, a vendor, potential vendor, and you don't see them bidding on K-12 situations, so they're targeting more of the, you know, the post-secondary institutions.
What I honestly think is, I think companies who may be in the food services business, but who aren't experienced with public K-12 programs or with the national lunch program, I don't think they want to deal with the regulations, because the federal regulations are onerous. I mean, you have to, for food reviews and for administrative audits, you have to have recipes for everything, so like, anything you see out in our cafeterias that are handmade, you know, whether it's like a bean salad, they have to have recipes for that. You can't just throw it together. It's not like you're a home cook. You have to have a recipe to make sure it meets their guidelines for sodium content and oils and all that fun stuff. So it's not really, it's not fun.
And plus, we're a small state too.
So we have, we don't have the RFP template?
Nope.
Okay. But what are we submitting to these companies then, that are walking through? Was just a guideline from the state?
This was a special, this was a special thing that they allowed us to do, just for them to come in and look at equipment and give us estimates on what they thought would be, needed to be replaced and what they would recommend to be replaced.
So three came through, only one said we need to replace equipment, but all three could potentially provide a proposal?
Correct.
Right.
So what it was is, is the federal guidelines are basically saying that when you, when a food service management company proposes to bid on your, when they bid on your contract, they can no longer just have a line that says, "Investment in equipment." They have to, they want them to detail out the equipment.
What are they going to do? Okay.
Okay, so that's fine, it's, okay, that's a valid thing, but to detail out the equipment, the USDA said, "Well, you should tell them what you need detailed out." And the pushback from the business managers were like, "Well, we don't know what we need. We don't cook in our kitchens every day. The food service management companies are hired to run our business, they're the ones who know. Well, you can't just ask them. You have to, you know, you have to do a request for information." It's like, "Okay, fine, so how do we do that? Oh, well, you just have to do one." So there was no guideline on how to do an RFI, so I was like, "All right, well, come walk through our kitchens and tell us what looks like needs to be replaced." I mean, that was the best way we could do it.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand, so we could have three bids on this, but only one company has said that they're going to actually replace equipment as part of the bid?
Right. And so now, what I'm supposed to do is, I'm supposed, I have to go out and price that equipment, because they weren't allowed to actually price the equipment for us either.
Okay. They just recommended what needed to be replaced?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the other company said you don't need to replace anything?
No, the other companies chose not to put anything out.
Okay.
So theoretically, I mean, I guess technically, if no one had put anything in, then I would have to sort of guess as to what needed to be replaced, which would be kind of interesting.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, don't forget, we did do a lot of work in our serving areas and our kitchens two summers ago also, so.
So a lot of stuff was...
Does anybody else have any questions about that, or anything else Gabby covered before we move on?
The turf field, I want to give you an update on some of the work that's been going on behind the scenes. Jack, Gabby, and I went to a planning and zoning meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the issue that we're confronting now is the height of the light poles in the specification. Our current elevation on the lights is 60 feet, 65 feet, I'm sorry. The lighting vendor that Malone and McBroom used to give us our specs for this project is recommending 80 feet, and 80 feet allows the light positions to be downward rather than more broadcast to the side, which means less light spillage to the outside, and more efficient lighting for the entire field, better lighting. Players don't have angled light in their eyes if they're going to catch a high ball that's coming at them, so there's some safety concerns with it also. But unfortunately, all of our schools lie in residential zones, and so just about everything we do is by special exemption permit, and so we need to go and talk to P&amp;Z about this because it may require us to do a regulation change in order to, in order to have the lights go to 80 feet. So we have engaged Malone and McBroom once again now to do a little side study to assess what the current light spillage is to the surrounding properties and what that would look like in comparison with the 80-foot higher-tech, more modern lights. We suspect that it's going to be significantly less at the 80-foot mark, but let's let them do their due diligence, find out what's going on with this lighting, and then report back to us, and then we'll go to P&amp;Z and talk about next steps with that. The whole issue of the turf field really resides now at Town Council, okay? I need to reach out to the chairman there and see where we stand with that, and whether or not there's a chance of it going forward or not, and I will do that before midweek this week, so we'll have more information upcoming about the turf field. Couple of weeks ago, when Jerry Stevens came on the board, he attended a Cabe workshop on orienting new board members, and he spent some time talking to the Commissioner of Education, Diane Robers-Wetzel. You may recognize the Robers part because the Robers family is a presence here in Monroe. Diane went to school at Massey High School and graduated here. It was in the 80s, right?
Yeah.
And so a conversation occurred between Jerry and Diane about the possibility of her speaking at graduation. Well, we approached her to do that. She has it in her calendar for our projected date, and, you know, if we get snow days, and she can adjust, she will, but if we get snow days, there could be the possibility that we lose her as a speaker.
That's great, though.
Of that evening. But I just thought it was really a cool coincidence of fates here that we could possibly have a Massey grad who currently serves as the Commissioner of Education in the state of Connecticut come and speak to our community. So that's nice work, Jerry, on that. The BOE self-evaluation document, the survey, is online. We looked at it this morning, and I think there were four respondents to that survey, so this is just a reminder to take a couple of minutes and conduct the survey. I'm going to check about some issues around whether or not that's a public session or an executive session if the board does a self-evaluation, and I'll get back to you on that fairly quickly. I want to take a minute and talk about curriculum. You're going to get a curriculum proposal this evening, again, from Mike Crowley, who you've seen before here with some curriculum work, but something came up today. John was a bit ecstatic because he wanted to share in our cabinet meeting the current curriculum maps that are available on our webpage. This has been a labor of love for John and a bunch of people, but especially John for his leadership with this over the past three years. It's taken, right, John, about three years, a lot of pushing, a lot of pulling, and a lot of problems. So I'd like to have John just comment about it and show you what this thing looks like so that you can access it and so that the people watching the board meeting could access it. So, John, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, thank you, Jim. We're very excited about this. I'm very excited about it, and so is Sheila and all the curriculum leaders, and you'll find this on our webpage, I just want to get to it. About 15 years ago, we started looking at curriculum a little differently, because what was happening was, we were developing curriculum, they looked great, it was a great document, but it was put on a shelf and nobody looked at it. So we started to look at, instead of writing curriculum, we were going to write curriculum maps for each class, each course, each subject area. And the curriculum maps were a K-12 look at what we do in the district on all subject areas. And we had people come in and talk to us about understanding by design and how we were going to develop these curriculum maps. So we were starting to work on curriculum maps, and people were really liking that. And what we discovered way back when was dinosaurs were taught four times in a kid's elementary career, and because people like teaching dinosaurs. So we decided that we were going to really look at a K-12 continuum, and we were going to make sure that we, what we said we were going to teach in that grade is taught. We weren't going to repeat dinosaurs or the Revolutionary War 15 times. We were going to have each grade level have the topics that they were going to teach. It took a long time, and we finally got in a good spot. We had, at the time, a tech person who developed kind of a program that we could put the curriculum maps in, it never really worked very well. And then about five years, six years ago, we purchased a program that we use for curriculum maps. It never really worked well. It was hard making changes. Anytime we made changes, we had to go to the company. It was, our curriculum maps are a living document. We want teachers to use them every day and make changes as they see fit, share ideas with other teachers, and this was not the program. So Lisa Peterson, who was the instructional leader for World Language, said, "You know, I think we can do this in Google and using Google Docs." So we abandoned the $8,000 a year curriculum mapping software, and Lisa Peterson went about developing our maps on Google Docs. We got all the instructional leaders involved, and they started to work, so everybody was working on the same thing. And now the big reveal is here, because we said, "January 1st, we were going forward with this," and people were really working hard to get this done. So if you go to our webpage, and you go under departments, and you go under curriculum and instructions, first thing you'll see is Monroe Curriculum Maps K-12, and you'll see it separated by grade level, by subject area, or by school. So if my student is in Font Hollow, you'll see the grade level, so I want to see, my student is a fifth grader at Font Hollow, and then you'll see all the course offerings that a fifth grader will see at Font Hollow. So if I pick social studies, these are the units of study for fifth grade social studies. So every student in fifth grade will study these units of study. Now, a teacher has some flexibility on other things they can bring in, or on how they're going to teach it, but settlements and early colonies is part of our curriculum in fifth So it talks a little bit about, you know, an overview about the unit, it talks about that. The Connecticut Core Standards, what standards are we teaching? The Connecticut Framework, and if you clicked on this, you would see the Connecticut Framework. And remember, social studies has their own framework in Connecticut, so if you clicked on that, you would, it would take you to another page of the Connecticut Framework. Essential Questions, so what students should be able to answer when they're done with this unit of study. Then the Concepts and the Skills for each, for the students in that unit of study. And then there are Technology Integration and Resources that they're going to use, and then Key Vocabulary. So this is what parents will be able to see when they go on to the curriculum maps. But we've taken it a step further to make this really a living document. We have a faculty page, and you have to be able to sign in, so parents won't see this part, but when we signed in, you'll see Assured Experiences, so that every sixth grade social studies teacher will know that in fifth grade, the students did the Roanoke Inquiry Activity. So they'll be able to, from sixth grade, be able to refer to that with their students and know that every student in fifth grade had that assured experience. We talked a little bit about assessments and what the assessments will be. And then there are optional activities, and again, if you click on these, the teacher will be able to see the optional activities, and they'll be able to use this and not have to, you know, did I keep that in a folder, is it in a binder? It'll all be right there. Click on the folder to open the case, they'll be able to use this with the students. This is all work that teachers have done for this investigation. Then there are the other resources that the teacher can use, and it's there, and we hope, you can see all the work that's been in here, we hope that as teachers use this, they'll change these resources. When they find a good resource, they'll put it here, so that a new teacher who comes in and teaches fifth grade isn't fumbling in the dark. They have a nice, a nice plan to start with. So that, those are the units of study. You could see it, that was just fifth grade, and you could, the units for the fifth grade social studies, these are all the subject areas. Now, it is a work in progress, and when you click on every single area in unit of study, it might not be all completed, but at least we have a nice, a nice framework, and people are using this, and it's a document that's not just going to sit on the shelf, that teachers are going to use and be able to work with their kids on. So we're really excited about this. We're going to send something out in a school messenger to parents that they know, that they'll be able to go online and see what their kids are doing and what the essential questions are and where they need to go with that. So I am excited about it. And it has been a long time, a long time coming. And Lisa, again, that's off to Lisa Peterson for really helping us with that.
I think you can see why John was so giddy this morning when he was showing us this now going live. Things like this are monumental tasks, monumental tasks to put together all of this information and make it so available. So we fully expect that some educators in the room and those watching on TV will lift this material and use it for their own schools. Please feel free to do so. Okay, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on any of that? Or for John? Great job, great work. Hopefully, people will steal it from us. We will move on to item eight, which is Presentations and Monroe Reads Book Review. So we will move on.
Good evening, everybody. I feel very privileged to have a guest with us tonight, Margaret Porchers, who's the Director of the Library at Edith Wheeler Memorial Library. And we are here tonight to talk to you about Monroe Reads 2016. So we have a few slides to share with you, and we're also going to reveal tonight's book to the public. We thought this would be a good forum for that, using the TV and also ultimately YouTube. So first of all, who is Monroe Reads Together? It's a committee we've had now for three years. It's comprised of library staff from Edith Wheeler, its community members, its local business owners, it's a number of members of the Monroe schools, including administrators, reading consultants, and teachers. We really tried to have it be a true cross-representation of the Monroe community. Our goals really are about engaging the entire community in literacy, having a common dialogue about issues within good pieces of literature. We were very fortunate in our first go-around with Monroe Reads to have a very engaging book and get a lot of the community involved in reading it and talking about it. So we're looking to continue to have that work continue in the future. So why are we doing this? Of all the things we do, literacy instruction is really probably the most important thing. There's tons of research out there on the benefits to the community, from our own growth, all of us, no matter if we're a kindergartner or a senior citizen, our, the benefits from literacy are multifaceted, and we really want to see that be something that we share with the entire community. So our work to date, in 2014, we had our first book, which was Dinner with the Smiley's. It was, we couldn't have been more fortunate to have a great first year. Sarah Smiley was a great author. She came to us with her whole family. We weren't expecting that, and they came to all the schools. We had a great culminating event at Jockey Hollow. As you can see, the shot on the bottom right there is... As you can see, the shot on the bottom right there is the Author Conversation. Jacquey Hall was pretty full that night, and it was a wonderful way to start off this endeavor. We really did engage a large portion of the community around a book that people found very worthwhile. We also were able to tie that into Veterans Day activities, and also, that was very well received. So what about this year? We didn't gloss over 2015, by the way. In 2014, we had Monroe Reads in the fall, and as we looked at this year, we thought it would be best to have it in the spring. So rather than being a fall event 2015, we're looking for spring 2016. And we took a different approach in a number of ways. We're not going to have an author conversation this year, it's going to be a panel discussion, and we're going to show you a little more about that. We have some great people on the panel with national notoriety in their respective fields. And we're going to reveal the book tonight to all of you and everybody on TV. And a little bit about the book, we really did look to engage everybody in all age groups. One of the nice things about this book is that it's a New York Times Bestseller, but it also has a companion book written specifically for students starting at about grade four and going up through middle school age. Margaret's holding a copy of the companion reader.
The easy reader.
So the nice thing about that is it really does work for us, elementary all the way through senior citizens. It's a nonfiction book, it reads like a novel, it's got a great historical connection, since it's character-driven. And we're going to share a little bit more about it. The book this year is The Boys in the Boat. And we have copies available as of today at Edith Wheeler, right? And we also have copies available at the school libraries. A matter of fact, the, the grant that was received from the Weller Scholarship, and some of those purchases, Rachel, were going towards The Boys in the Boat. So we're going to have, that's what I thought. And so we're going to have copies available at all the school libraries. Also, Linda Storytime has been great to us. The book she sold last year for Dinner with the Smiley's, she took a portion of the profits and kept that aside for us to use this year. So the books that you see in front of you were purchased courtesy of Linda Storytime and that money that she put aside. So she did that for the purchase of these books here at the Board of Ed, as well as copies we bought for Town Council. So we have plenty of places where folks can get a copy of the books. And we're going to share just a very short, about one-minute video that'll give you a quick overview of what this book is all about.
In 1936, as the Nazis prepared to stage the Summer Olympics in Germany, nine working class boys in the American Northwest nurtured an impossible dream. They came out of nowhere, out of logging camps, dairy farms, shipyards, and small dusty towns. But in 1936, in an old shellhouse at the University of Washington, they found one another, and together they set on an epic saga. Ahead of them lay the prospect of Olympic gold. They crushed the two-time Olympic champions at the University of California. They beat the best crews in the East, the well-heeled sons of bankers and lawyers and corporate titans. They took on rowing's elite aristocratic British boys from Oxford and Cambridge and smashed the world's record to win the right to row for gold. Then, in Berlin, the heart of the new Nazi state, the stage was set. On a nearby balcony, Adolf Hitler stood watching. Out on the water, his German boys wore swastikas on their chests. The crowd, 75,000 strong, began to chant Deutschland, Deutschland, Deutschland. And the flag was dropped.
Deutschland, Deutschland, Deutschland! 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 So the book, I think you really will find that it's a very enjoyable read.
It's truly a great American story. It's about a group of boys that really shouldn't have amounted to anything, and they truly made something from nothing. So I think you'll really enjoy it. Regarding the panel discussion, what we decided to do is we put a panel together rather than having an author. Part of the reasoning is we really, again, it's about engagement, we want to engage the community in a dialogue. So we thought by having a panel that's conversant on the stage and also really pushing questions with the audience, that it would be just a way to create dialogue. The other thing we want to do is, in the schools, we would like to get video of students asking questions. We want to get them out that night, but also, having it at Jacquey Hall, there's a backlit screen there, you're going to see in a moment, we have a moderator as part of this discussion. And we want to get students actively involved in this dialogue. So we think we have some creative ways to do that. The panelists, as you're going to see right now, are pretty amazing. The first panelist that we have in this discussion is Mara Ford. She was a 1988 Olympian, and also is the Associate Director of the National Rowing Foundation. As you can see here, she is in this group behind Ron Reagan in 1988. That's the entire U.S. Olympic team of which she was a part. Our second panelist is Tom Wheel, nationally-recognized rowing historian, and also a former member of the Yale Crew. And our third panelist, he's going to confirm with us tomorrow. It's 90% done, but he needed to check with his superiors. Commander William Randall, he's the Director of Rowing for the United States Coast Guard Academy. We're very excited to have him as a possible panelist. So that is our panel, those three members. And then we have a special guest who's going to be our panel moderator, somebody who I think you might know. Jim Augustine, Superintendent of Schools, is going to be the moderator. And as you may not know, one of Jim's passions, among which there are many, is boat building. And Jim has refurbished and created many different boats. I think the one Jim is sitting in is an Old Town canoe that you redid. Am I right about that?
1923, that was shipped to a small boathouse on the shores of Bantam Lake.
So the exciting thing about this is Jim's background in boat building, as well as he's an extremely well-read individual. He's loving the book so far. So he'll be the person managing questions within the panel, as well as those coming from the audience, and those from the videos as well. So we're very excited about, you know, how this is coming together, and we hope all of you get the chance to read the book, and that all of you will have the chance to come out to the panel discussion. It's going to be on March 27th. It's at Jacquey Hall Auditorium, 7:00 P.M. And again, books are available at Edith Wheeler, our school libraries, and Linda Storytime. And also, on the Edith Wheeler website, there's going to be a number of other activities, including the head coach from Yale University.
One of the Yale coaches is going to come and speak, so we're really excited about that.
So another place to look and participate in other events around this book. So thank you.
Oh, I have just a few additional things to say. In addition to the copies that you were given tonight, there, we mentioned that there is also this Young Readers Edition. We also have multiple copies of large print books at the library, so anybody who would like a large print copy is invited to come there. The library also has eBooks available for downloading, and we have audiobooks available also. I actually listened to it and really enjoyed listening to it. It gives a little bit more of a dimension to the, so if you are strapped for time and you want something to put in your car, audio, there you go. So come see us. One more thing I wanted to mention that, I gave this book as a gift to one of my friends who reads almost everything that I recommend to him. And he took a look at it, and he said, well, you know, I'm not interested in reading a book about rowing. And I said to him, well, you know, this is much more than a book about rowing. It's a great story. And if you're not a nonfiction reader, if you prefer fiction, this reads like fiction. So I think once you start it, you'll get, you know, right into it. So I'm hoping that each and every one of you will give it a try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a great, great read so far for me. There's some questions here.
I'm definitely going to read it. My question for the, I know you mentioned it, but I didn't catch it, for the Young Readers Edition, what were the grades for that?
This is a targeted grade, four through six.
Four through six, okay, perfect.
And Linda Storytime does have copies in stock, school libraries do.
And we have the library, you know, we have it at the library also. We even have this one available as an eBook too, so in case you're interested in putting it on your tablet, you know, you can do that. If anybody's never done that, you know, just give me a call, I'll be happy to help you, or our reference desk is always helping people put eBooks and audiobooks on their tablets and phones.
George, did you have?
George, no.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, exciting, can't wait.
Yesterday, my wife and I had a rare opportunity to spend some time together, and I'm in the finishing process of another restoration. I always have a boat restoration project going, and sometimes they take two or three years. Even that little canoe was over a two-year project, because you're trying to save the existing materials and be true to what the original boat builders did. And so I wanted to get a couple of supplies, and we ran over to Bristol, Rhode Island, to the company that I usually mail order most of my supplies from. And as I pull up, the building to the left of them was a place called Resolute Racing Shells, okay? We were really close to closing time by that point, and so I didn't get a chance to go in, but I did dash off an email, because I'd like to go and take a factory tour. And what you could see are these 60-foot-long racing shells, all stacked up in the racks behind the building, and they were just, you know, gorgeous pieces of work. So I'll make it a point to go there in the next months or so before this read happens. So great stuff going on. And that's the kind of collaboration between the town, the school district, you know, how many people, Jack, in total, are going to the meetings and doing the work on this?
We probably have a dozen consistent folks. Mike Crowley's a member all the time, the school librarians are there, we have a number of principals on the board, town librarian's consistently there. So it really, it's a nice cross-representation. Linda Storytime consistently there. We have another librarian who's a resident in town, but is a librarian, I think, in Easton. So, you know, it's really great. One thing, the, there was one typo, the date is March 22nd. March 22nd.
Yeah, it's Tuesday Sunday.
Oh, March 22nd, please, Mr. Sanders.
This is 29?
29.
Thank you, 29.
So it's March 29?
March 29, Tuesday, March 29.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to Item Nine, which is Old Business, and we have a couple of policies up for the second review and vote. Do I have a motion to approve Policy 5131.1, Students' Bus Conduct, and Policy 6142.101, Instruction, Student Nutrition, and Physical Activity/Student Wellness Policy as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Do I have discussion on these two policies? George, did you want to say anything before?
I think John presented it last time.
He did.
Okay, basically, we're just adding the suspension policy reference to the first one. And then the second one, we're essentially addressing concerns around any homemade goods being brought into the school or sold by the school, and trying to put some governance around, around that.
Great. Is there's any discussion on these policies? Here are none, all in favor? Great, thank you very much, most in passers. We will move on to Item Ten, New Business, and first up is a review of the curriculum proposals, and this will be a first review, and.
I'd like to have Mike Crowley come up, Mike, if you would, and just give us a flyover of what the, what these curriculum changes are.
Absolutely. I know Alan, you know, the board rep on the Curriculum Council's giving you an overview on your packet, but I thought, just to give you some additional information, so there's some new members of the board that I've not yet spoken in front of, some of you guys have been here for the last five years, you might come up every year for five years, and talk to you about the new English curriculum. Just to give you sort of an overview, when Common Core came in, and we knew it was coming down the pike, we took a look at what we had going on in the high school, and we also looked at what our students were being exposed to, and the college and career readiness goals that we had for them. And we realized that we wanted to make some changes to our curriculum. So over the course of the last five years, the Board of Ed and administration has been extremely supportive of us making some changes, and this is really the last step of this, this round of changes for it. So in that time, we have changed every grade level, the curriculum, we have condensed levels, we have taken away that lowest level and said, hey, if we're going to graduate students all college and career ready, we have to make sure they know how to engage with rigorous texts and be able to have strategies in order to work in college, whether it's a two-year college or four-year college, with these texts. And this is the last step to that. Today, I'm presenting two senior electives. If you remember, last year, you approved five senior electives, and they have proven to be extremely popular. And we still had Honors, Great Books as a year-long course. But this year, we're going to ask to approve two Honors Senior Electives, so Great Books will no longer be part of our curriculum, but instead look at two courses. The first one being Ethical Arguments in Fiction and Nonfiction. And what that is, excuse me, looking at contemporary ethical issues and how that is addressed in fiction and nonfiction. What I'm setting around right now is a text that looks at a variety of different issues, modern issues, the ones we are going to focus on, where things, Rules, Rights, Duties, and the Greater Good, Responsibility to Self, Medical Ethics, and Gender Equality. When we did student surveys, two or three years ago, looking at what would you be interested in taking as senior electives, we were shocked that the number-one response was ethics. Most of the juniors and seniors said, we want to talk about it. They love to debate, they want to have these arguments in class. What we want to be able to do is give them the tools to argue effectively and critically. So we think it's a really important, it was sort of a hole in our curriculum, that we did not have a forum for these students to actually have intelligent, mature arguments, and really sort of build these into the curriculum. And this course does that. In addition to that text, we're also looking at Medea, which is a classic Greek tragedy that continues to be argued today about the decisions that Medea and Jason made from that, and also a play by Henrik Iveson called Hedegabler, which is another classic text. This is an honors course, so we definitely wanted to balance classical literature with some of the modern texts, nonfiction and fiction. So you'll see those coming around. Sort of the, the basis of it is, the first three weeks is how do you really build an argument? And we know from the new SAT, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago with you, the new writing portion of the SAT really addresses, how does somebody build an argument? That's what they're going to be asked, that's what they're tested on, is being able to say how they build an argument. And that's what colleges are saying, that they want their students to be able to do, so that's also in response to that. So that's the Ethical Arguments in Fiction and Nonfiction. And the second semester-long course, they're both semester-long courses, is Travel Literature, which was another one that students voted for heavily in the survey. And what that is, is a little bit more of a contemporary look at travel and how it allows us to explore ourselves, explore others. Some of the works in that would be Into the Wild, you guys might be familiar with Into the Wild by John Krakauer. He also wrote Into Thin Air. Into the Wild's about a young man who takes off to go into the wilderness, because, well, we're not exactly sure why, because he, he sort of, he ends up there and doesn't come back. But they did find his diaries, and that's really what a lot of this book is about. But John Krakauer does a great job in connecting it to American literature also, which is an extension of what they've been learning in their running rate here. We also have a book called Catfish and Mandala, which is about a Vietnamese-American, a son of Vietnamese-American, Vietnamese immigrants, excuse me, who wants to go back and wants to find his roots, and he, he bikes through Vietnam. And so it has another perspective of, it's sort of the American immigrant experience. And then we have a whole unit on women and travel, and there's this wonderful series called The Best Women's Travel Writing, which is contemporary essays, nonfiction essays of women's travel writing. And we pair that with a classic text by Ian Forster called A Room with a View. I don't know if you guys know A Room with a View, sort of a sweeping romantic novel about a young British girl who goes off to Italy and sort of finds herself, and when she comes back to England, she's just not the same woman, and she has to follow her heart and not necessarily what Victorian England tells her to do. So, again, a balance of classic and modern for that. These two courses will be part of sort of the These two courses will be part of sort of the cafeteria aspect of Senior English, which, you know, right now is being, um, we have Modern Heroes and Horror Literature and Creative Writing and Battlefield Literature and Modern Drama, and I'm forgetting one, Film and Literature and Public Communication. So, there's a lot for them to choose from. And by the way, Modern Heroes, uh, we read Boys in the Boat in Modern Heroes too, so we have a good connection with that, and the kids really enjoy that this year, so. Read that, that's a good one. State of Connecticut, we've talked about High School Reform. Part of the High School Reform Act also includes an additional year in Humanities for students, and so we know that that has to be met in a variety of ways. We're hoping that these half-year courses, if they're paired with some of the, uh, semester-long history courses that are already in play right now and are going to be also, um, looking to be developed in the coming years, that will help students who are, have a Humanities bent, that they're going to have some extra, um, choices. One of the reasons why we wanted to have some honors ones is we have students who are taking AP and UConn English who want to take another English course, and it might just be for a semester, that they want to pair with an honors class. And so, it gives them the opportunity, and we also know that, I'd say, college, you know, I have nobody else here, none of my other instructional leaders are here, but, you know, colleges like to see additional English courses. They know that that's, that on the transcript shows a dedication to critical thinking, to writing, to reading, that they're looking for in, in colleges. So, uh, hopefully this will serve as a nice suite of courses for kids, and so that when they end, and they finish their time at Massey, they have sort of experienced the world, and that's really our goal.
Now, for the past decade or so, um, the two key words that you've heard in education are engagement and rigor. And, you know, there's nothing better than engaging kids in what they're interested in and raising expectations simultaneously, and, and I'm really proud to have Mike on staff and working with us because he has certainly done that with the English offerings over the past five years or so with these curriculum changes. And, Mike, you deserve a pat on the back for, for what you're doing, and I think our kids are way better off for it going forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mike? All right, well, we will, then, this will be up for a second review and vote at our next meeting. Thank you so much. All right. Excuse me while I go back to the agenda. All right, we will move on to Item Number Eleven, which is the Superintendent's Midyear Evaluation, and I need a motion to go into Executive Session and invite the Superintendent to join us.
Simone.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Um, any discussion on this? We will actually adjourn from, um, Executive Session, no action will be taken, so we will just end the meeting from there, so we will not come back here.
Joe, can I use your conference room? Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. [end of transcript]